I would like to call a June 25, 2025 City Council Regular Meeting in order. Would everyone stand, please stand and then join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will a clerk please call the roll?
Carrie?
I'm here.
Chilson?
Present.
Hutchings?
Here.
Nelson?
Ah, he's requested an excused absence for illness.
Parker?
Yes ma'am, I'm here.
Whackler?
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is the Approval of the Agenda and Consent Agenda. May I have a motion to approve the Agenda and Consent Agenda? Ms. Carrie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move the Approval of the Agenda and the Consent Agenda as presented.
May I have a second, please? Thank you, Ms. Hutchings. Are there any changes to the Agenda or Consent Agenda? Vice Mayor Parker?
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. I would move to add Lay Down Action Memorandum 2025-012, Request for an Excused Absence for the June 25, 2025 Regular City Council Meeting. Nelson, to the Agenda and Consent Agenda as New Business Item 9.7.
Second, please. Thank you, Mr. Carrie. Would the clerk please read the Consent Agenda?
June 11, 2025 City Council Meeting Minutes. Ordinance 2025-019, Approving the Fiscal Year 2026 Capital Budget and Increasing Estimated Revenues and Appropriations by $395,000 in the General Fund and $395,000 in the Small Capital Project Fund, Sponsored by the City Manager, Public Hearing on July 9. Resolution 2025-022, Commending the Saldatna High School Baseball Team for Their 2025 Division II State Championship and Exceptional Season, Sponsored by the Mayor. Resolution 2025-023, Adopting the City of Saldatna Five-Year Capital Plan, Sponsored by the City Manager. Resolution 2025-024, Approving Amendments to the Retention Schedule for the Clerk's Office, Economic Development and Planning Department, Parks and Recreation Department, and the Library, Sponsored by the City Clerk. Resolution 2025-026, Authorizing the City Manager to Enter into an Executive, excuse me, and execute an Agreement for Dispatch Services with the Kenai Peninsula Borough, Sponsored by the City Manager. Action Memorandum 2025-012, Request for an Excused Absence from the June 25, 2025 Regular City Council Meeting, Sponsored by Mr. Nelson. That is your Consent Agenda.
Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak on any item that just read by the City Clerk? Seeing no one in the audience wishing to speak, let's see about Zoom. And I see no hands raised there. Having no one wishing to speak, the Approval of the Agenda and Consent Agenda is back before the council. Any objections to approving the Agenda and Consent Agenda? Seeing and hearing none, the Agenda and Consent Agenda are approved by unanimous consent. And at this point, I will have a resolution for the Sohigh Baseball Team. And I know they're all sitting out there. I'll give everybody fair warning now. I'm going to mangle most of your names. I have a terrible time doing that. Okay, here we go. City of Saldatna Resolution 2025-022, A Resolution Commending the Saldatna High School Baseball Team for Winning Their Division II State Championship and an Exceptional Season. Whereas, the Saldatna High School Stars Baseball Team Achieved Remarkable Success During the 2025 Season, Culminating in Their Second Consecutive Division II State Championship Victory. Whereas, the Stars Completed the Season Series Against Rival Kenai With a 2-1 Advantage, Including a Decisive Championship Game Victory That Repeated Their 2023 Title Win Over the Same Opponent. Whereas, Saldatna's Depth and Team Chemistry Were on Full Display in the Title Game With Seven of Nine Spots in the Lineup, Producing Both Eight Hits and Eight Runs, Demonstrating Balance and Offensive Strength Across the Roster. And Whereas, Matthew Schilling Led the Stars Offensively By Going Two-for-Four With a Run and an RBI, Earning a Spot on the All-Tournament Team Alongside Teammate Tucker Blough and Trenton... Oh, okay. And Whereas, Pitcher Trenton Pitched a Complete Game, Striking Out Thirteen Batters, Allowing Three Hits, Two Runs, and Two Walks Over Seven Innings. And Whereas, The 2025 Stars Embodied Composure and Confidence Throughout the Season With Head Coach Gibson Praising The Team's Calm Demand And Ability To Perform In Close Games Against Strong Competition. And Whereas, Saldatna Challenged Itself With A Rigorous Schedule In Preparation For Its Upcoming Move To Division One, Including Thirteen Games Against Division One Opponents, Twelve Of Which Were Against State Qualifying Teams, And Four Wins Or Ties Against High-Caliber Programs. Whereas, Under The Guidance Of Athletic Director Phil Leck And The Direction Of Head Coach Ken Gibson And Assistant Coach Jesse Dawkins, Mae Pavel, and Charles Michelson, The Stars Embraced A Competitive Schedule Designed To Build Readiness For The Next Level, Laying The Groundwork For Future Success. And Whereas, Saldatna's Baseball Program Has Proven To Be A Model Of Consistency And Excellency In Division Two, Amassing An Extraordinary 13-2 Record At The Division II State Tournament Since Inception In 2021. And Whereas, The 2025 Team Not Only Added Another Championship To The School's Legacy, But Also Represented The Saldatna With Outstanding Sportsmanship, Determination, And Pride. Whereas, Members Of The Winning Team Include Trenton, Brendan Thiel, Tucker Blough, Erie Miller, Brett Hostetter, Wyatt Gagnon, Colby Sturman, Jaden Stovasent, Matthew Schilling, Ethan Piscoy, Malachi Dawn. Yeah, you know who that is. Jeff Brophy, Jack Harper, Jackson Colts, Peyton Goforth, Silas Duncan, Samuel Graham, and Tristan Roberts. Now Therefore Be It Resolved By The City Council, The City of Saldatna, That The Saldatna City Council Formally Commends The Saldatna High School Stars Baseball Team, Their Coaches And Athletic Staff For Their Exemplary Performance, Their 2025 State Championship, And Their Continued Pursuit Of Excellence As They Advance To Division One Competition. This Resolution Shall Become Effective Immediately Upon Its Adoption. Congratulations again, guys.
I took some, but I can take another. We'll see you next year.
Do you have any seniors that you're visiting?
Yeah, so.
Seven of them are going to be a former Sohigh coach, I know seniors.
Now you can start practicing in the field house.
So we got several teams.
Some of you around, obviously, team guys. We'll be doing the grand opening on the field house, the new field house. Come check it out. If you're playing next year, there'll be turf in there so you can start practicing early.
See you, guys. Have a good one. Thank you again. Next item on the Agenda is Presentation With Prior Notice. Saldatna Visitor Center Quarterly Update. Heidi Sorrell, Executive Director, Saldatna Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney, and City Council. Is it okay if I move this? I'll start here on Page One. I'll give a synopsis, so I'm not reading it verbatim to you. Membership and Visitor Center Activity is all up from Quarter One. It's been up in Quarter Two. Quite a lot increasingly, just as summer approaches, you know, visitors are trickling in, and it's up from last year's Quarter Two as well. So it seems like year after year, it's getting busier and busier with visitors. And so we've seen not only increases in the actual visitor center, but also increases in all of our events as well. So the Fun Run, the Lemonade Day, all of those things, each and every one of them, all increased numbers. And as far as our membership goes, our membership is holding steady. And let's see, I've got the number written down here. I believe it's 480. Eighty, yep, that's correct, 480. So it's slightly up from Quarter One. We've had some staff come onboard, and we are working on some processes and goals going forward to be really member-focused for existing members, but also focused on growing our membership. So we want to really make sure we're utilizing our membership as something that local businesses can take advantage of, and so that they know what the benefits are, they know how we can benefit their business and what we have to offer, so that it's a resource they can utilize, not just something, you know, that they donate some money to be a member. I really, really want to focus on what we can do to grow local businesses and help sustain them, and kind of delve into what their needs are. If you go down to Event Highlights and Community Engagement, let you have a little look into Lemonade Day. We had 140 participants and 44 stands across the Kenai Peninsula, and that took off on June 14. That was pretty exciting. One of the most exciting things, I'll say personally, was seeing the kids' faces. So when we showed up with Lemonhead, I mean, those kids were just in awe. You would have thought we dropped them off in Disney World. And the other thing that was pretty cool to see was all the willing business participants. And so, I mean, businesses, we weren't lacking for businesses wanting to participate. If a kid wanted to sign up for their Lemonade Days Stand to be somewhere, we had a business for them. And I thought that was really neat, and it was not only great for the kids, a great network and great support. And business owners, they would come out and they would check on the kiddo in their parking lot. It was also really cool for businesses, because you had people that would go around to each stand, and it was a nice way for that business to get extra exposure as well. So Lemonade Day, huge hit. That was the highest number we've had so far for Lemonade Day. The Fun Run was an increase in attendance also. Love it Amp has seen its highest number as well. Tonight probably is not as high with the rain, but the last Wednesday was 2,663 attendees, and that's the highest we've had yet. Yeah, so things are just climbing. It's just steadily climbing. Let's go down to Business Support and Economic Impact. We have hosted four luncheons along the last quarter in Saldatna. And that's not counting Joint Chamber Luncheons in Kenai, just the ones in Saldatna. We've had a combined total of attendance at those of over 250, just of leaders, staff, students, and people from the community. We've kicked off our quilt tour. And if you haven't partaken in our Shop Local program, it's awesome. Come get a, you know, Shop Local passport, and it's just a neat way. People love it. I can't keep passports on the desks enough at the visitor center. It just seems to be a huge hit, and we're in the process of trying to come up with another Shop Local program. And what basically how it works is there's a quilt hanging up in different businesses, 21 different businesses across the peninsula, and people have to go fill up their passport. They bring it back with all the different stamps that they've seen the quilts hanging up, and they have a chance to win 21 different prizes. But it gets businesses sign up to have one of these quilts. They don't have to make it, they just sign up to have the quilt. And it brings people in the door that would have otherwise probably never come in there. So it gets exposure for the businesses. And it's just another way that we can help our members, you know, see foot traffic in their door. But it's been wildly successful, and we're brainstorming ideas to come up with more, you know, shop local programs like that. Financial and Operational Overview. With all of the, and this is as of June 20. That's when I had all my numbers pulled, my report. With our combined entities, the Saldatna Chamber, River City Pull Tabs, and Vision, we saw approximately $12,370 in revenue. So we are positioned well financially moving forward into the third quarter. And then if you go to the second page for Visitor Center and Marketing, we are slightly higher than May of 2024. And that was only, that was as of June 20, and on track to wildly pass what we were at, just the traffic today alone. I mean, it was overwhelming for just the two employees that were over there, and we had to come over there and help out a little bit. But visitors from all over the place. And we keep a visitor center log, and they sign in as a guest, just to say where they're from. And we've had people, several people from Russia, Germany, Australia, just really all over the world. It's kind of shocking how many people come to visit Saldatna, Alaska. And so that, just that sign-in book alone is kind of a story, and it's really interesting to see. If we go down here to the Sports and Rec Trade Show, those were also very successful. Sarah had hundreds of business cards that people paid to have handed out and put into the hands of, you know, potential people that might come, you know, use their fishing guides and stuff like that. And she was able to hand out every single one. Every single business owner was able to have exposure there. And they seemed to really, really like the opportunity to be represented at the trade shows, even though they couldn't personally be there. So it was a good resource for our members. And Sarah had a lot of leads coming back from that, and we just saw really good numbers, and it's increased quite a lot from last year. And you can kind of see the specifics there. But going down to Saldatna Advertising and Marketing, you see listed all the different places that we are currently advertising. New ones that we've added this year are the Birch Ridge Golf Course Scorecard and the Matt Sue Greatlander. And we use the local Greatlander, but we also did the Matt Sue Greatlander just to advertise the Love it Amp Music Series, to kind of let people know from the Matt Sue that we have the music series. And then, how am I on my time?
Keep going.
Okay.
You're good.
Okay. Just let me know. And then, Saldatna Visitor Guide Distribution for 2025, Year-to-date is 813 mailed qualified leads. Relocation packets, we've had 21 website requests and 30 phone calls requesting relocation packets for Saldatna. And I'm not sure if you guys know what our Saldatna Geo Cash is. We've had 30 seekers for that, but essentially what that is, is onsite, we have a little cash, and it's kind of like, you can get online, and it's this thing where you have to find the coordinates of the cash and see if you can find it. And once somebody finds it, they'll leave something in there for the next person. And so it's this neat kind of hidden gem that we have at this Saldatna Visitor Center. But we'll get people from, like I said, you know, all over the world and, you know, the United States, that'll come looking for that cash, and they'll put in the coordinates, and they'll have to find it. We don't tell anybody where it is, it's in the woods somewhere. And they'll have to find what it is, and they'll leave little treasures in there for somebody else to find. Social Media Insights Overview. All of our social media is up a huge amount. That's been something that we've really focused on. And as far as Facebook, we've been doing live reels and stories and just taking advantage of that as a way to get exposure as a chamber. And so you can kind of see, I mean, interactions are up 688%. Views are up 462%. Everything just seems to be climbing on all of those. You can see some of our best-performing content below. One of the things that performed really well was a post we did where artist Susan Watkins came in, and she painted a mural in the visitor center. And also, thank you, City of Saldatna, for the refresh in our visitor center. It's made a huge difference. And, you know, visitors coming in just absolutely seem to love the refreshing change in there. But Susan painted a mural in the wall in there, and it's just gorgeous. If you haven't stopped in to see it, come on in. But everybody responded really well to that, both online and in person. If you go over to the right-hand side of the second page, you can learn a little bit about our website statistics here. And I will say, the website seems to have been going down in most areas year after year. And we are looking to change that. And I think, not I think, I know the reason for that. According to Matt Nash, our website digital marketing guy from Hype Digital Marketing, is that we have directed, or traffic has been directed to all the social media, but not to the website. Or if they find the website, then they're directed to social media to find more details. And some people don't have Facebook. Some people don't have Instagram. You know, some people don't have or utilize those things. So what we're in the process of doing right now is we're going to keep our social media information up and high, but all of our forms, to fill out, like our job forms for luncheons and everything else, they're not going to live on our social media anymore. They're going to live on the website. So when people, you know, they might find us on social media, but when they want to sign up for anything, or they want to learn more information, they're going to go directly back to the website. And so that way, not only can users of social media be directed to the website, where we'll have most of our current, all of our current information, but those who don't use social media can also find us more on our, you know, all the information on our website there. And so we're just working on that. And so instead of having the reverse happen, where everybody's, you know, trying to find things on social media, we're trying to direct them as our website being the end-all-be-all for current information. And so if you turn the page on the back, you'll see a list of the events that we've had in the second quarter on the left, and pictures down there on the bottom. And then our Scholarship Award Winners listed below. And I want to say a special thank you to the Hutchings. Our Education Committee could not decide between two scholarship winners, and the Hutchings stepped up and provided another scholarship on top of everything so that they didn't have to make a choice. And so that was a huge blessing. And just, there's a little bit, I kind of already gave you guys the synopsis, but for Love it Amp Music Series, Color Fun Run, and Lemonade Day, you can just read again just some specifics about those. But overall, everything has been going really well. On Love it Amp Music Days for Wednesdays in the Park, we provide a lawn activity from 5:00 to 6:00, right before the concert. And that seems to have been a big hit. We're doing, the first week, it was the Fun Run, but the next week, it was tie-dye. And then the next week after that, it was scat tracks and fur recognition. And the Wildlife Refuge Center stepped in to do that, and we recruit, you know, different entities to take part in that. And it's just another opportunity, again, for exposure, but also to draw in the community to what we already have going on. Was there any questions?
Ms. Carrie?
I'd just make a comment. I really like the digital marketing information.
Yeah.
I think it's very helpful. And as you become more efficient and you're doing your job better, they don't spend as much time. And so it's interesting, it's good and bad. They're not spending as much time, but you've done such a good job, they found what they need more quickly. And I did have a suggestion, though, about top searches. If you'd have an entry in terms of, what is the city council doing? I am sure thousands of people all over the world would want to know. So just a suggestion.
Okay, yeah. Was there any other questions?
Just, thank you.
Anything? I guess not. I'll thank you very much for the presentation and good information.
Awesome, thank you.
And we'll see you at Progress Days, for sure.
All right, sounds good. And if anybody wants to volunteer, I'm still accepting, just so you know.
I think Callie just raised his hand, didn't he?
He did not.
I think I thought. I'll call you later, then.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is Public Comments and Presentations. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak on any item not appearing on the agenda? Seeing no one here in the audience wishing to speak, we'll take a look at Zoom, and there's no one there. Moving on to the next item is Assembly and Legislative Reports. Are there any representatives from the borough and other state legislation that would like to address the council? Not here in the audience, and no one on Zoom. Public Hearings, next item on the agenda. Ordinance 2025-018, Increasing Estimated Revenues and Appropriations By $35,000 In The General Fund For Additional Legal Services Introduced By The City Manager. May I have a motion to enact? Ms. Hutchings?
I make a motion to enact Ordinance 2025-018, Increasing Estimated Revenues and Appropriations By $35,000 In The General Fund For Additional Legal Services.
May I have a second, please? Thank you, Vice Mayor Parker. A report from the administration.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The additional funds requested are due to a higher-than-anticipated demand, particularly in complex public records and ongoing personnel matters. We've had a lot of public records requests, and some of those involved a lot of redaction, both of video, audio, and then paper as well. That is the reason for this additional request.
Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on ordinance 2025-018? Seeing no one here in the audience and looking at Zoom, there's no hands raised there either. Moving on, are there, having no one wishing to speak, the item is back before the council. Are there any council comments? Mr. Chilson?
I'm just looking for a little additional elaboration on the increase in legal costs due to public records requests. My understanding was that members of the public are entitled to public records for free up to a certain point that's considered reasonable, but beyond that, if it requires a significant amount of staff time to process, we're allowed to charge them actual costs. So with our fee schedule, do we need to revisit what we're charging to process these records requests at a certain point if they're getting to this level of intensity where it's requiring a significant outlay to support those?
I don't believe that we do. A part of it is that state statutes states the number of hours, I believe them to be at five. And a lot of the requests and request stores know their line of how many hours can be used for certain requests and they stay within that timeframe. And so it's, it's the volume that we had, and in particular, we had a large volume of requests.
Got it.
That stayed under, the individual's request stayed under the five hour limit.
So if there, if there's a five hour limit, can one particular person put in 100 requests? That take four hours each? There's no cap on how many instances?
That is correct.
Got it.
Some of, five hours in a month.
Okay, so there's some limit there.
Yeah, some limit there. And a large cost had to do with redaction of both video and audio. And it did involve the police department and as you can imagine, they have sensitive documents that do have to be redacted. You heard the chief spoke, speak, I believe it was last month regarding the new camera system.
I was going to ask about that.
And the redaction system. So hopefully in the future, we won't have to send that out for redaction, but we did have to pay that cost. Some of those costs were recouped for that, from that request store. But there is, you know, that limit of they can request as many as they want and stay under that number.
Got it. Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Any other questions from the council or any other comments? Are there any objections to enacting ordinance 2025-018? Seeing and hearing none, ordinance 2025-018 passed by unanimous consent. Next item on the agenda, unfinished business postponed items. Resolution 2025-017, changing the regular city council meeting time from 6:00 PM to 5:30 PM introduced by council members Chilson and Carey. The motion to adopt is on the floor from the June 11th, 2025 council, the council meeting. And so report from council members Chilson and Carey.
I'd be happy to speak to it, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Mr. Chilson.
Thank you. I introduced this resolution with Councilman Carey because I believe that there is some benefit in updating our regular meeting schedule to an earlier time aligned with other city boards and commissions. But at the time when this was conceived, I assumed that this would be a routine change that would have benefited everyone pretty well unanimously. But based on the feedback, that doesn't clearly seem to be the case with some of the concerns that were shared. So the schedule we have now works and although I, you know, I believe that as this is proposed, the change may possibly be better for some. We've heard it would cause some problems for others. So that said, at this time, I don't support changing our routine meeting schedule. But I do believe it would be worth revisiting at some point in the future. So tonight I will be voting no on this.
Mr. Carey, did you want to add anything?
One of the things that I find very interesting is listening to the comments also by members of the council. As Mr. Chilson said, in terms of talking to the community is always helpful. The comment made by the person to my right last, last time we met changed my mind. The idea that it would, it could make it more difficult for someone who would like to serve on the council to serve because there's not enough time from when they'd get off work to be here. That to me was more than enough to say, I can't support this. So I appreciate, I was very pleased in meeting with Mr. Chilson before this meeting that we had both agreed that we weren't going to support this. And so again, I also had hoped that everyone would defeat this motion.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? Resolution 2025-017. Seeing no one here in the audience wishing to do so, we'll take a look at Zoom and there are no hands raised on Zoom. Having no one wishing to speak, the item is back before the council. Are there any other council comments? Seeing none, I will call for the vote.
Chilson?
No.
Carey?
No.
Hutchings?
No.
Whackler?
No.
Parker?
No.
You have five no votes.
Resolution 2025-017 fails on a zero five vote. Going on to new business, that appears to have all been on the consent agenda. Next item on the agenda is mayor and council reports, mayor's report and proclamations. Really don't have much to report on tonight. You saw the Sohi baseball team here again and hopefully they'll be here again next year, even though they're moving up to a higher bracket. And we'll move on to the next item. Council reports on boards and commissions. June 19th, 2025 Airport Commission Meeting, ICE Mayor Parker.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. The Airport Commission met and it was almost a record meeting time. The main item that was discussed was an update provided by the airport manager on fee schedule. And other than that, no major action items unless there's something the airport manager would like to add.
And I just thought of something I did forget to mention. Chamber Commerce Lunch this afternoon was a joint luncheon and Director Joel Todd from Parks and Rec made a presentation to everyone there about the field house and, and the progress that's made, where we're at right now, what's going to happen in the future. And some of the laydowns show that there's already events scheduled there for August 20th and August 21st. So it's moving right along. And then we had a tour of the facility. I think everyone was very pleased with what they saw and what they're going to see in the future. And we actually had someone run on the track.
Very fast.
Very fast. And it wasn't me. So that, next item on the agenda is the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have the written report in the packet and I just wanted to highlight a couple of items, one being the BioSolids Dewatering Systems Loan. And as you know, you've previously seen the legislation for approval of obtaining a loan. This last time that we submitted paperwork and requested a loan, we were pleasantly surprised and happy that almost $2 million of our requests for loans will be forgiven. The, the project itself is still under works, still being worked on. And a project report will be before you at a later date when it is fully completed as far as what the next steps are. The Marydale Avenue Improvements Project, our federal lobbyists informed us that both Senator Lisa Murkowski and Congressman Nick Begges III have included the funding in the appropriations committees at this time. And that is really good news. That means it's included on both the House and the Senate side. Very early, this is very preliminary information, as you know, it had, projects have fallen out at the last minute, but we're, we're very happy to see that included in both the House and Senate side. There was a question during, I believe, one of our, no, it ended up being during our capital improvement work session regarding the storefront improvement program. And one thing that I wanted to highlight that there have been 32 projects since inception. The total of all the projects, over 700, almost 786,000. The city's investment, 165,000 approximately. And then the private funds matching is about $623,000. So that much of an investment back into our community. When the AML Board Meeting was here, we, we had tour. Thank you to Kyle and Scotty for giving the tours. And in the van I was in, Stu Graham from City of Wasilla, council member, spoke of our storefront improvement program. He had heard about it and wanted more information. So it was really nice to speak to him about it. And then we were able to point out in our tour, some of the buildings that had received the funding. So we did want to follow back up on that with you and I don't believe, oh, one thing that I forwarded to you is a recognition of Soldatna with the Small, National League of Cities Small Cities Council, I believe that is the full title. It, the city is involved. We are members of the Small Cities Council, mayor, vice mayor and myself. And so they recognized the field house. And it was nice to be recognized because what I find at National League of Cities and then also ICMA with the city managers, that there are a lot of awards for a lot of big cities and not often are the small cities recognized. And so it was very nice to be recognized. That's all I, this evening.
Just to add to that, we just got an email also from somebody commenting about that, Michael Halper.
Well, he wants to sell us a product.
Yeah. But again, it, it's kind of more of a PR type thing.
Yeah, right.
Yeah. And, Mr. Carey?
Looking at our meeting announcements, do we have a work session on July 9th before that meeting? Do we still have a work session planned?
No, we do not. I believe.
The two resolutions, the ordinances that were in the zone, subject thinking?
I don't know. I just on my calendar, on my phone, it says work session. I'm trying to figure out what it is and, or if it's something that's not going to happen.
That was tentatively planned, the two ordinances that were, that were postponed, tentatively planned for July 9th.
Okay.
And those had, that has been postponed to, I will get to the data, I can't remember.
The major thing is we don't have a work session on the 9th. Thank you very much.
I have a quick question on your report that the Marydale project was on both the House and the Senate side. What if one of them moves it ahead and the other one doesn't?
At this point, both the senator and congressman have moved it ahead, so it'll be the committees that would take it out. It, it would stay in one or the other. It, it would just move along.
So if one dropped it, the other one wouldn't, don't be pushing it forward?
Correct. If, at this point, if the committee moved it that way, that would be correct.
Thank you. Moving on to the next agenda item is public comments. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak on any item? No one here in the chambers to speak on anything. And let me take a look at Zoom. And I see no hands raised there. Moving on to the next agenda item, council comments. Ms. Hutchings?
No comment.
Mr. Chilson?
No comment.
Vice Mayor Parker?
I'll, I'll take their time. Thank you, Mayor Whitney. One of the things that the city manager mentioned was Wasilla being interested in the storefront improvement program. Remember here a few months ago, City of Fairbanks enacted an ordinance based on us sharing the storefront improvement program. And so it has, is serving as a model and I think Kodiak has done the same as well. So it is being used around the state in other communities. The recognition from NLC, when you look through all the projects that were in communities that were recognized, Soldatna was the smallest community recognized. And we were truly a small city in that group. And that's all. Thanks.
And one little thing about the NLC, Small Cities Council, they consider a small city anything under 50,000. So we're, we're doing good, doing good. Mr. Carey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before our next meeting, of course, will be July 4th. I'm very pleased to be an American and have the rights and privileges that we have and hope everyone will take advantage of appreciating this country by celebrating with their family and friends on July 4th. Thank you.
Ms. Whackler?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to thank everybody for hearing my words last meeting in accessibility for, for meeting space and accessibility to participate in local government. And I appreciate you hearing that and making a decision based on that. So thank you guys for once again deciding that accessibility and access to these positions is a priority. So, thank you.
Moving on to the next agenda item, executive sessions, there is none pending legislation. We have two of them coming up and a public hearing on September 10th for those two. Meeting announcements, the July 2nd, 2025 Planning and zoning commission meeting at 5:30 PM. And on July 9th, 2025 city council meeting at 6:00 PM. And everyone have a happy and great July 4th. And I fortunately will be here the first time in about 20 years for the 4th of July. So having nothing before us on their agenda, nothing further, we are adjourned.